I'd like to call this February sixth, e- regular meeting of the Ely City Council to order. Could we could all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. To our meeting. It should be super exciting. Super happy. Can you see, could you please call the roll?
Sure.
Councilmember Alf Hoysman?
Here.
Paul Cass, drum and bells?
Here.
Ryan Callen?
Here.
Angela Campbell?
Here.
Adam Bisbee?
Here.
And Mary River? I am here. We do have a court, so we can go ahead and get our meeting started. I need approval of our minutes from the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four regular council meeting and the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four public hearing. I have a motion by Jerome, support by Angela. Any discussion, any changes in the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. We have three additions proposed for our agenda this evening. Are there any additional additions or omissions to our agenda this evening? Are there any? I'll take a motion to accept those three then.
I will privilege A through C additions.
Thank you, Al. Is that supported? All right, and support by Adam? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mayor's report, don't have much to report beyond the fact that there is a winter festival going on. So if you get a chance, try to take part in some of the festivities. I know that they are going ahead with some of the things. I was, I drove, I know I was trying to get across Sheridan Street on Saturday and it was almost impossible. Even getting across town was almost impossible. So there are people around, there are people in town, and that is always a good thing in Ely, especially this time of year. So hopefully, we want a little bit cooler weather right now?
Sure.
Okay, some people don't, but I do know there are. So with that, we will go ahead and move ahead to consent agenda. I need a motion to waive the readings in their entirety of all ordinances and resolutions on tonight's agenda. So moved by Jerome, supported by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request to appear. We have a couple fun requests to appear this evening. First up, we have Grant Speckelmeier, I believe, Executive Director, and Krista. Why do I try to use last name? I know them by their firsts. From the International Wolf Center. We look forward to this presentation every year. Thank you, Grant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Marissa. Thank you, Council, for seeing us today. I'm pleased to be here. I'm wishing the Winter Festival felt a little more wintery, but like all of you, I'm sure. But it's, it is nice to see the snow sculptures out there and see people around town, and we have them up at the center. So today, we're going to give a few highlights from last year, and I'm going to let Krista do the highlights because she was personally responsible for many of them, so I felt like it's only fair to let her brag about them a little bit. And then I'll come back up at the end and ask for your support on something a little bit else. So Krista, you want to talk?
Well, hello. It is Jorge, so just to clarify the incredible spelling of it last week. But thank you for having us. And twenty twenty-three was a big year for the Wolf Center, and a lot of that is due to the support from the Council and from the city. And we really appreciate that and enjoy being part of it and making a lot of improvements to our facility that kind of helped keep those visitors coming and keep them in our town. So of course, one of our big highlights is our wolves, and this particular wolf is Axel. And Axel was actually diagnosed with a skin condition, and he was starting to lose his fur. And through a lot of vet care, he is very, very furry despite the warm weather, which they are like, okay, like, we're hot, I don't need as much fur, but that's okay. So he is one of our big highlights, which has started out our presentation tonight. The other big thing, one of them, was last winter, early in the winter, we had a brand-new air conditioning chiller installed. And the really funny part of this was that we had spent more days with issues with our air conditioning than we had air conditioning, and then had to deliver it on one of the coldest days of the entire winter. So they came with a crane truck, delivered it. It has been installed, and last summer, we had air conditioning every day. It was fantastic. We also had a new exhibit, so we worked pretty hard to have things that are changing and are updated and are new so that visitors who are coming and people who are coming to Ely and come for their annual visits have something new to see. So one of the things that we did was install a Arctic wolf ecosystem exhibit. So we've got a Wolverine, an Arctic wolf, a musk ox, and an Arctic hare. And if you haven't been there, I highly recommend checking out the Arctic Hare Month. It is fabulous. We also do a lot of virtual programming, so we do programming with local community and local schools, but also schools that are all over the country. Get a lot of publicity for Ely and for the Wolf Center by doing those with those students. And some of them make the trek from other states. We had families that just called yesterday, actually, and said their kid had been in a wolfing program, was so just excited about it that they made the trek to Ely, stayed in Ely for a week, had a great time, visited the Wolf Center. So we had this background installed, which is kind of the highlight of this because it had been that green wall, and we wanted to maybe step away from the weather person green and have a much better background. And we've done a lot of upgrades for the wolves and also for the security. So some of you have probably watched our Wolf cams and the webcams. But we have like fourteen cameras right now that, most of those are broadcasting internally. We have three that are broadcast to the public. And we've been shown on the weather station in Duluth just headed on a couple of days ago. The stations in the cities are also showing those as well, so we're getting some publicity for our town and for the Wolf Center through that as well. So this was a big improvement for us to install not only this enclosure, which is, it's a kind of a medical enclosure so that if we had an issue with the wolves, we could get them off exhibit, and then a camera that was installed as well. And we're also working to improve the grounds. We had Zone Three gardens come out, put in a native pollinator garden around our flight pool. And last year, if you remember, we had an electric vehicle charger installed. The installation of that may have disrupted that garden just a hair, so we might reinstall this year, and it really took off. So we did a fantastic job with that. And you can't have wolves without feeding them. So we invested in a truck, which for most people would not be quite as exciting as it was for us. It also has a lift gate. It's an amazing thing, so when we're out on the road helping clean up the roads and picking up rook hill deer that we feed to our wolves, we have this nice truck and a lift gate to be able to do that safely. And if you've driven by recently, we got a great big new sign, which is fantastic. So we're with someone out of Hibby that carved this sign and installed it. And really, it's quite a bit bigger than the old sign. The other one had been there for the better of thirty years, and we were very concerned about their heads falling off. So this new sign is going to hold up better and prevent their little heads from falling off. And then we also worked with Tom and also with Tom and to get the shot dogs installed at the high school and a banner as well. So we were really happy to be part of that and sponsor that for our whole schools. And we're working really hard at increasing accessibility within the International Wolf Center. And one of the ways that we're doing that is through various ways of interpretation. And we work with a company that is doing ASL interpretations for videos for our programs. So we have programs that are offered to the public in our auditorium every hour throughout the day, every day that we're open. And we had videos that were made that are entirely ASL interpreted for that, as well as a greeting when people come in. They can check out an iPad, take that around, and we're hoping to add more accessibility applications to that iPad and really make it a much more accessible experience for everyone who visits. We also wanted it to be a little bit easier for mobility reasons. We have a couple of wheelchairs that are available, but we also had a generous donor who allowed us to purchase a motorized scooter. If you've been to the Wolf Center, the ramp up to the big windows can get a little long. So this scooter has really been much more heavily used than I anticipated, so it's been a great way to also add mobility accessibility as well as interpretation. And not super exciting, but if you are a group, particularly if you're a scout group heading to Northern Tier and you're spending the night, you stay in our auditorium. We got new carpet! So that carpet had been there, and the advertised way is you get to sleep in our auditorium on the lightly carpeted auditorium benches. But now you get to sleep on new carpet, which is even better. And we have been expanding our staff, which is really, really exciting. This is Nate Wilson. He has been in Ely since about 2018. He started out as an intern with us, then worked out at the scout base, and was just recently hired as our full-time facilities supervisor. So we are adding a couple more positions in 2024. So we're really excited to be hiring and adding to those full-time positions within our town. And the whole entire year was really, really busy, was really, really successful, and we were all jumping for joy as well as our wolves. This is Reika, who is in midair, and she is our two-year-old female. And we do enrichment for our wolves at noon and at four every day, every day of the summer. And we have to mix it up because the wolves get bored and they're like, no, forget it, I'm not coming down for that. So these are actually peanut butter flavored bubbles. Not that I have tasted them, they smell horrendous, but the wolves really love them. So she was jumping for joy, just like we were, at the success that we had in 2023. So again, thank you so much for having us. It has been a really big year for us and adding to the things that help people stay here.
Thanks, Krista. And, you know, it was, I always, we've seen this presentation like three or four times, and I'm always like, man, no wonder I'm so tired. And no wonder everyone in Ely is so tired after all the things we've been solving and changing this year. I guess the one thing I wanted to let you know is probably the one obvious thing missing from the list of highlights of things we did at the center this year. We were hoping to be saying, put a new roof on the center this year. Because the last two years, we've gone to the state legislature and asked for funding for a new roof, which has been in failure since 2014 at major leaking and ice dam issues. We also have some pretty significant problems, aside from the chiller that just got replaced with pretty much everything else in the HVAC system, boilers going down. It's, you know, what happens when you have thirty-year-old infrastructure. Our building is owned by the Department of Natural Resources. We lease it from them. They help us with small stuff, and then when we come up with the big items, they say, well, maybe next year, maybe next year, maybe next year. Finally, someone told me, you need to just go ask the state yourself. So we've been working with it, and we've come up with some pretty good strategies. We've gotten a lot of support. We almost got in last year with our request, but it didn't, it didn't go through at the last second. So we are retooling our ask. It's a little bit more. It's 2.1 million. After we kind of looked back at our numbers, added some inflation for construction costs. And so we're asking for a little bit more to get this done. And we're coming in a two-pronged approach. We're going through capital investment like always, but we're also going in through the environment, natural resources committees. And we've got support, at least on the Senate side, real strong support. Roger's been supportive as well, but, and both Roger and Grant are supportive. And I'd love to get the city's support, if possible, for our ask this year.
Council? Is there support for that? Turn around, our support app. Any discussion?
I will just say that they just explained how important it is to our community and the state. So yeah, hard not to get behind this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have your line.
Thank you very much, Al. I'm assuming I'll work with you here all time.
Yeah, probably.
If there's anything else you need us to do, let us, let us know, or if there are more you need us to do. Because I do happen to, I mean, I already have a couple trips planned to go to St. Paul, so if you need someone, if you need me to talk to anyone.
I'll email you. You want to, you want to go walk around offices with me?
Yeah, go ahead, Harold.
Just one thing I wanted to mention. I just want to apologize. We did a water main replacement project this summer to bolster up the service in the whole end of town. And we scheduled the connection at, like, hoping it was like the slowest possible time for the Wolf Center so nobody would be put out. And they did post that they were closed, and I was there for part of the, part of the work. There was a lot of cars coming up and going, whoa, is it open? Like, well, no, we just drove all the way up from Minneapolis, or, you know, fill in the blank of what community. So even on the slowest time of the year, I mean, it was, it was in the middle of the week, you know, on a typical price slower time of the year, there was a lot of people coming through. So I apologize for that. You probably missed out on a few entrance fees for those folks that day, but thank you for working with us. We did get all that water main replaced and.
Well, you did give us a warning, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, it was just, it stuck with me how many people came up on that middle of the week, you know, after school was in session and, you know, towards pretty deep into the fall, so.
Thousands more.
And again, I'm appreciative of how you help educate Ely, because I know that's available to Ely, and, you know, all of, all of Minnesota and beyond. I know it's beyond. And it means a lot to me as an educator, as a parent, as, as just someone who, I think it's important to get a different viewpoint out there from what's told in other stories. And then families have the opportunity to come visit, and I think that's important. I think that it's, it's good for children to see things. It's good for them to be able to go online and then to check things out, and then actually come to the Wolf Center. That it's kind of a well-rounded opportunity, and it's great that families can take advantage of that. So it's a unique opportunity, and I appreciate the fact that you all have the opportunity to do that. And the wolf event that you had this, this year was also wonderful. The past calendar was, was a great opportunity too, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, actually, on that point, I will let you know our summer issue, and I'll make sure to send a bunch of copies of International Wolf Magazine, is all about the history of the Superior National Forest Wolf Deer Study, Dave Beach's study, which just closed last year after fifty-eight years. And so it's, it's a historical retrospective of the last fifty-eight years and the founding of the International Wolf Center is part of it. So I'll make sure we get copies to all of you for that, so. Thank you.
All right. Up next, Cindy. Update on Ely Area Tourism Bureau 2023 Recap.
My thoughts, since I was going to be here for the updated MOU agreement, that this would be an ideal time to present our 2023 recap. There's a couple things I'll point out that we're still waiting on. For example, lodging tax comes in. We get our annual payment information in February, so we're still waiting on a couple of numbers that I put out our request. But I can show you through quarter three, and that shows a pretty good idea of what our summer season looked like in addition to some other requests that I've made in regards to Lake County metrics. So. Perfect. All right, well, starting off, probably our biggest advancement this year that I am incredibly proud of is our partnership with the Forest Service. We are one of very few in the nation who have a not only working relationship, a fiscal relationship, with our local Forest Service branch. So benefits of this organization are extensive. We have unilateral access to each other's content, and we're able to amplify our reach through their network. In addition, we've identified some active projects that we can focus on to start. That's beginning, we're beginning with Superior National Forest for All campaign, which is focused on inclusion. There's a couple of different ways that we're approaching that. I'll get into a little more detail upcoming during the Film Festival is the Community Conversations about Real Issues. And then our Visit Ely Minnesota Journal, which is something along the lines of our seasonal guide combined with a newsletter. So we're trying to fill in a different way of approaching our visitors with information that they're not seeing from other places, like the Chamber of Commerce's Visitor Guide or the Ely Winter and Summer Times, but doing something just slightly different and filling a void that we feel the Forest Service has a unique ability to do. And so we are beautifying their content and helping reach it through the Visit Ely network or provide and amplify through the Visit Ely network. So here's a little bit of a breakdown on the Superior National Forest for All project. Our campaign reach is 600,000 people. It's our goal. It's a collaborative project funded partially by the Forest Service. It's multifaceted in a way, like I mentioned, we're having a newsletter that will go out in the form of a journal and then promoting the growth of that newsletter database through emails. We are requesting emails to access a digital seasonal guide. So not only will we be providing them monthly information, you know, via newsletter. Actually, we're going to start quarterly. I want to correct myself there. We're going to start quarterly, and then we'll hopefully be reaching a monthly newsletter by 2025. However, we'll be always directing back to our seasonal guide, and that will contain information, I think I've got a lot more of on the following slide here. So the seasonal guides are not intended to be redesigned every year. They're intended to evolve and grow as needed, but that they would be rather established in the fact that the information within them does not change. A lot of this information is utilizing USDA Forest Service content that, again, we've just beautified and merged with the Visit Ely branding. Not only is this encouraging visitors, but also providing locals with information regarding common hiking areas, less common hiking areas, campgrounds, packing lists, general information, and just really inspirational pictures and stories regarding our area. So with this information, our goal is not only to provide visitors with what they need to have a successful trip, but encouraging them to take advantage of more of what the area has to offer when they are here in hopes that their trip will be just so enjoyable that they book another one. Seasonal guides continued here, but once our summer guide has been shared far and wide, we will turn our sights to a fall and then a winter. We have kind of combined spring with the tail end of our winter guide and beginning of our summer guide. Not that we don't feel that we have four beautiful seasons here. It's just a little bit hard to pin down, and we felt the hatrick of a summer, fall, and winter was a little bit more engaging than trying to fill it, you know, thirty to forty pages with the spring season. Of course, we're promoting all that Ely has to offer. Don't think that this is limited to the national forest areas. We want them to encourage. We want to encourage them to visit downtown. We want to encourage them to see what trail systems are in place and, of course, listen to our podcast. So the newsletter signup page is being finalized as we speak. And so, like I said, to gain access to the digital seasonal guide, we are growing our database of email addresses in which we will reach them with our now quarterly eventual monthly newsletter. Newsletter is just another method for us to track engagement, deliver information that we find relevant and that we believe our visitorship will find relevant. We can survey, we can, and gain more metrics. This is just a different, you know, marketing channel, and we want to be as diverse as possible in our marketing approach, so. This was our first winter Visit Ely MN Journal that went out in newsletter form. So we doubled what is known as a quality open rate, forty-three percent, which is very high. And a good click-through rate is somewhere in two to five percent, which just means that they clicked on something interesting and engaging to them on our newsletter that took them off the newsletter to our website that we co-operate with the Chamber of Commerce. And that was sixteen percent. So we feel that that is a great starting off point, and we hope to grow from there. So the top links clicked. People wanted to learn about our blog or learn more about Ely through our blog. They wanted to find out more information about the Film Festival, and then they wanted to listen or subscribe to our podcast. Those are the top links clicked, which are all three really great because not only, to point out the obvious, they're learning more about the Ely area, but they're showing that they're continually engaged and going to continue to be engaged. The podcast, if they're going to subscribe, then that means they're going to get more and more content. If they're reading our blog, they're going to be receiving more and more content. If they're going to the Film Festival, they're coming to Ely, so that's exactly what we want. Social media, never to rest on our laurels, we are consistently trying to grow our social media presence. It is the has been, will continue to be, in whatever platform exists today and exists in the future, the fastest-growing way to reach people. Six hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred people, an increase of almost a four-hundred percent over 2022. It's just impressive, and there's no doubt about the fact that our marketing director knows exactly what she's doing, which I post, and that we have expanded in the right arenas. Content interactions are incredibly positive. We have some examples on another page here that I can show you. Most importantly, you know, we're looking at the link clicks. We want to see that people are not only just liking or commenting, but that they're actually engaging in the content that we're posting. And then, of course, platform following. So this is high, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen for a DMO, a destination marketing organization of our size. And this does not include What's Up Ely, which is currently at twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. That's a Facebook group, so we don't classify it as quite the same. So if you were to include it, you know, we're fifty thousand plus, but there might be some overlap there. Social media video. You can see our reach on the bottom for two of our really popular posts. You can see kind of a style in which we try to emulate over and over again so that people identify our brand and see it as something professional and placed highly in their interest. And as far as quality of content, incredibly high for what the average person is seeing on their social media feed. We have really gone away from just resharing beautiful posts, but making sure that our content is all original. So just a couple examples there. A few more. These are some organic photo posts. We try to have a really tasteful mix of relevant, real-time content in addition to the historical, you know, heritage or cultural significance, keeping it relevant with the day and the age that we are in. If there is a, you know, week of or a celebration month, we try, if possible, to find relevant and, again, very authentic ways to celebrate that with Visit Ely at the forefront. We partner with Ely Wynd Historical Society very frequently for blog posts, social media posts, and we're getting into a new relationship with the Preservation Heritage Commission as well. So looking forward to seeing how we can work together in the future on that as well. I think this is the last social media highlight page, but this is 2023. It's Winter Festival, and I know it's a little different. But, you know, we do real-time coverage, which we found actually had a positive impact. One of our, our social media individuals was there in Visit Ely attire, taking content during the Film Festival last year. And someone came up and they were like, oh my gosh, we saw your post yesterday, and we drove up today. So, I mean, that's exactly what we want to hear. That isn't always the case. More often than not, it's, oh, that's really interesting. We're going to have to make sure we go do that next year or next, you know, weekend or something like that. So to have that positive reinforcement is just huge for our marketing team to know that we're making a real-time impact beyond just, you know, this really impressive number of plays, likes, and shares. But the engagement is just a really relevant way for us to track the success of our social media campaigns. So that is, those are, and these are stories that you see. If you're familiar with social media, there's a variety of ways that you can post. If you're familiar with social media, there's a variety of ways that you can post. You can see a screenshot there to the, to the right and that shows, oh, I guess there's a couple up there in the left too. But I mean, I don't often get the chance to like tell people, but I don't feel like my job is super hard. Everybody loves Ely. Like it's not, I come, I come to these, you know, presentations and I'm talking with Sarah, our marketing manager. She's like, I didn't have to edit out anything. Everything was really, really positive. So that's always, that's always what you want. Notable direct messages. So these are private. These are behind the scenes. These are people who didn't post. They wanted to make sure that we knew that they love Ely and that we were doing a good job of putting it in front of people. You know, without putting, without their permission or seeking, you know, permission to share their content, if their content is of quality, that they're sharing like these images and such. We generally don't get an opportunity to show this to the outside world, so that's why it's in this presentation today. But very much goes to show, people love Ely. Switching over to another form of marketing, Effect TV. These are expensive advertisements, but they are definitely worth the impressions that we are getting. Most importantly, I, my takeaway from this past year is the fact that our Effect TV representative was asked during a Midwest Regional Team Meeting to present Ely as a case study because of the success rates that she was able to show in our destination marketing. And she was asked to present why she thought Ely's impressions were reaching such high numbers. So when she told us that, it was very validating. Number one reason is just the quality of our content. It's so beautiful, people don't click out of it. So this is streaming impressions, traditional TV impressions overall, and then the watch-through rate, which is incredibly high. I think the average was something like 60. That should have been included on there, but it is very high. We have a KPI tool that will be able to measure our click-throughs from our streaming advertisements and that will be reportable by this summer. So we are also including some fall-inspired Effect TV advertising this year. And we'll be interested to see how that compares. It's a lot more, there's ATVs and a little bit more motorized sports. So we'll be interested to see if we can help boost some of the click-throughs to those, to information such as that on ely.org. iHeart, which is radio advertising, number of impressions. We are alternating, alternating between our Ely podcast promotion and general Ely spots that are all seasonal-based. And there's a screenshot here. It's never a bad thing to have the person who is responsible for marketing the state at a national and international level privately message you and say how great your advertisement on iHeart was. So just wanted to include that. They're definitely the authority on the subject and so happy to see that not only was he pleased with it, but that planning on making a trip up to Ely. Local radio, we have put so much effort into our podcasts this past year. If you're not familiar, I really, really recommend going and trying one of our three podcasts out. We have My Ely Story, which Brett Ross is the host. And that is going to be a one-on-one interview with somebody who has a really dynamic reason to be in Ely or a really interesting way that they came, you know, to be in Ely. We have What's Up Ely, which is the counterpart to the Facebook group. And Lacey Squire interviews a variety of people on each episode, promoting things happening in real time or upcoming in efforts to get people involved in activities, events, and just things of general interest that make Ely an attractive place to live, work and play. And then most recently is our US Forest Service Partnership Podcast, which is Forest North. And so we're three episodes in on that. And just recently, I'm sure we'll have metrics on here for you in a second, but just recently we were able to interview and walk people through sort of a managing their expectations of the permitting system because we certainly want people to come to Ely and we certainly want people to have a great experience. We understand where there may be the opportunity for them to not have a great experience and that is if they do not get the permit that they were very eager to receive. And so while we as a tourism bureau cannot do much about how the Forest Service system works in that regard, we can help people plan for and in addition, have a secondary plan of how to make a vacation out of the Ely area. So with that being said, we've found a lot of value in making the most of a relationship with the Forest Service in that way or through the podcast specifically. There's the logo, Forest North. Episode one was just a general kind of overview in which we talked a lot about just the sheer size and the variety of wildlife and, and, you know, flora fauna, terrain, et cetera, that you could experience in not only the Boundary Waters, but this Superior National Forest. Also a screenshot there of an email. Absolutely never hurts to have your legislators knowing that you're up to good things and being excited to see what's next. So this is from the Public Relations of the Forest Service Gala. We've been working with Joy, or I'm sorry, Public Affairs Staff Officer, Joy. And she has been really awesome to work with, so we're excited that they're excited. Earned Media, earned media is simply advertising that you get without paying for it. People who see good things and coming out of the Ely area and choose to put a megaphone to it. NPR, Smithsonian, typically we have a National Geographic on there. Didn't happen this year, so 2024, I'm sure we'll be right for it. But it's always exciting to get these call-outs and we are infinitely proud to be making these shortlists when we do. Print advertising, we haven't completely done away with anything like that. We have certainly tried to learn how impactful it is being through QR codes. Those are something we can easily track and find. And also easily direct people specifically to pages that they will find interesting pending where they came across our ad. For example, if they found us from the snowmobile ad, then they're going to be directed to information about snowmobiling. They're not going to just land on our landing homepage and go, now where do I go? Once they're on our website, along with 284,199 other people in 2023, which is another major increase, we're happy to see that. We put a lot of effort into our website over the past couple of years, rebranding, relaunching with the chamber. The one thing I'll say about websites is they're never done. You know, it's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You, once you're finished, you start again. Like every single page is being reviewed constantly. So if you ever see something that you're like, this page could use some love, let us know. You're probably right and we will certainly put it to the list. Click-throughs are something we really, really actively try to have happen. We have seen increase, but realistically what that means is people are just enjoying our website, finding a lot of really relevant information and they go, yeah, I'm ready to, ready to book that resort. I'm ready to, you know, learn more about the trail system at Hidden Valley. And that click-through is clicking through to another site in which they can continue to learn more about the Ely area. So that's what that is. And top states and click-throughs by source. This presentation can be provided to you via email if you'd like to look at it in a lot more detail. But basically just knowing that organic search is our highest. And while Minnesota is our predominant demographic, we do see a lot out of Illinois and Wisconsin is, is growing. Iowa used to be a little bit larger of a contributor and Missouri is kind of encroaching on the Iowa territory, but they never accounted together for more than 10%. So in reality, this chart looks pretty consistent to me. Lodging tax. So for those of you who, you know, have been following the Tourism Bureau for some time, you know that this is our metric of measurement. There certainly is a desire across the board to gain access to more metrics, but we have been slowly and gradually improving. I won't even say slowly. I think in five years we've made some really big strides. But improving not only, you know, our core and our brand, but expanding and making sure that everything we put out is of the highest quality. Now we're sort of taking a step back and saying, okay, let's, let's take an approach that actually lets us market, you know, ourselves and show how good of a job we're doing as a marketing agency. And one of those elements to me is showing how many people and for the duration of stay, the impact that we're having. And I know this is something that you have asked me about. And I'm meeting with the University of Minnesota to learn a little bit more about third-party data collection. But for the historical purposes and for the purposes of today, this is the metrics that we use to measure the success of not only our marketing, but of our tourism industry as a whole. So you can see that there is some growth, keeping in mind please, that this is quarter three through quarter three. So the total that you see in yellow, highlighted and circled in yellow, sorry, circled in yellow. That is our current 2023 through quarter three lodging tax. Now, the two line items beneath that are the estimations and they're pretty accurate. They are estimations only because we are hoping that Lake County will be able to verify them. Short-term rentals that collect their lodging tax and allow Airbnb to pay their lodging tax on their behalf is being held at the county level. So that money, that 31,161,41 is an estimation through quarter three of the lodging tax that is not making its way back to the Ely area. The Joint Powers Board has an attorney. They are working with an, on an MOU. The Lake County Administrators and now Joe Baltich have been very active in assisting us in those conversations. However, you can see in the green circle item at the very bottom, that is what we should be using as a lodging tax total. There is a final number on here that I'd like to point out as we get into one more slide. It'll make a little bit more sense if you're not familiar with what the event tax is. But the event tax is one of the 4% that we, Lake County, when they implemented their county-wide tax, it went from 3% to 4%. That additional 1% is the event tax. That is withheld also by Lake County. That goes into the Lovin Lake County Event Fund in which you have to apply to receive. So this report goes out quarterly and let's see, I know I send it out to a variety of people. Paul obviously receives it being on the Joint Powers Board. Pretty sure that, do I send it to you? Okay. I'm going to start sending it to Casey because this is, this is actually kind of a new format. I sent it to the Echo, I know that. So we've got a couple of people that we try to make sure it goes to and we ask that they disseminate it. I don't have a huge list, but this is also something that when we have our stakeholder emails that go out to our lodging taxpayers and to individuals who request to be added to that list, this is something that you'll see on there. So the Lovin Lake County Event Tax. This is something that I've tried to turn my focus to this year. I am very interested in seeing how Ely, or as I should actually specify, Fall Lake Township, because they really, Lake County does not want to hear from the Tourism Bureau or the Ely Area Joint Powers. They want to work directly with Fall Lake Township. On how we can access this event grant fund in a more equal fashion to the amount being contributed. So we know, because we know exactly how much lodging tax was collected in total, that that 1%, again, only through quarter three of 2023, was over 50,000. And so I have requested information from them, how much was applied for by the Ely area and how much was awarded by the Ely area. The reason I want those numbers is for a variety of reasons, but most specifically is I kind of want to go to bat for some of the individuals who I know have been rejected from those funds, specifically if too much of their event takes place in the Ely area and not in Fall Lake Township. As most of you are probably familiar, Fall Lake Township doesn't have any event venues. It's rather, you know, the, the commercial operations are resorts. They don't have spaces, inside spaces, meaning that their events are probably going to be hindered by the weather. Also, business owners are incredibly tapped for time. So for them to coordinate an event in which the application amount that they suggest is somewhere between $1,000 and $3,000, the value just isn't really there. And so the application amounts that Ely has requested, I think are quite low. Certainly not equal to the amount that the Ely area has contributed. So stay tuned, finding out more on that. 2024 additionally, beyond just finding out more data as much as we possibly can to make the best decisions in regards to marketing and then securing our lodging tax to the highest percentage possible, we have obviously marketing goals. So our seasonal guides will be released. We are working with the Ely Heritage Preservation Commission on an audio component of their walking history tour. The Minnesota Monthly Digital Geo-Fencing Campaign, you see some of the banner ads there on the side. Superior National Forest for All, we talked quite a bit about that and the successful ongoing effort of our email marketing, which is the Visit Ely Journal. The Ely Area Tourism Bureau microsite. So I talked very briefly about the stakeholder email, but just basically our efforts to have open door policy, public communications with people in our area who are very vested in the success of our tourism industry. A way for them to learn more, be engaged and have access to this information at, at, at any time. Converting our YouTube channel into our podcast platform. So YouTube, we've historically just kind of shared small clips as we have them. However, we've realized that podcasts have sort of evolved. Now where people aren't just listening to podcasts, they also want to watch them. So we are putting an audio or a visual to our audio component and hoping that we will be able to grow our YouTube following in conjunction with our podcasting. Social media, never will not make the list. We are always trying to grow that and to engage with our followers. NPR, we have a very active campaign with them as well, as well as iHeart and Effect TV. And then podcast growth, that's pretty, pretty obvious. We have updated our Tourism Bureau's mission statement and that is to promote and support sustainable area tourism through authentic and exceptional marketing, strong partnerships and innovative local programs. Some beautiful pictures that are from our content collection effort that we made this past two years. Put a little bit of a descriptor here on our mission statement, just what our, what sustainable tourism means to us, what authentic marketing means to us and what exceptional marketing means. And basically, these are our promises to the community. Our marketing team has grown. Not only am I proud to serve as the executive director, but I am very proud of the team that I get to work with. Sarah Vogel is our marketing director. Lacey and Brett are our podcast hosts. Alicia Roller is our new social media manager. We have a financial manager now, which is wonderful. I mean, these are very part-time roles, but they make a big impact in addition to our head content collectors, which are Mike Fitzgerald and Chris Eller-Brown. So all together, we've created this mission statement and more than that, a description of what it means to us and what it means we're going to be providing to you. Our partnerships, existing and strengthened. There is more room for partnerships on this page, but I'm very proud of the ones that we've been able to secure and we don't take the partnership with them lately. So included on here is the city of Ely. And with that, I guess I thank you for your time and I'm open to any questions or can provide my email, which is tourism@ely.org. If anybody wants to reach out.
Just one question I have is if you go back to the lodging tax through the third quarter and Lake County contribution that's being withheld, has that typically, I see looking back the years prior, 2020, it was 5% or $5,000 and... back the years prior, 2020, it was five percent or five thousand dollars, and the next two years, it was a hundred and twenty thousand. Is it, is it typical that that money gets held up for an extended period of time?
So actually, thank you for bringing that up. So in 2021 and 2022, that hundred and twenty thousand, well, actually, I should include the five thousand in there from 2020. So the way that the four percent lodging tax was implemented, they requested a grace period of two years. So in October of 2020 is when the four percent lodging tax went into place. They requested a grace period, and we, the Joint Powers Lodging Tax Board came to an agreement because twenty, let's see, it was two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, they took the average, it was a hundred and seventeen thousand per year that Lake County collected. So they rounded it up, and they said, if we gave you a hundred and twenty thousand for 2021 and 2022, would you be content to start receiving your true lodging tax in the beginning of 2023? So that's how those numbers were reached. A hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents is how much the Ely area has generated from Fall Lake and Stony River Township, so the Lake County side of the Ely area in just quarter three. So you can surmise that we have increased the lodging tax collected in those areas substantially, and that a hundred and twenty thousand was a generous reach that we landed on for 2021 and 2022. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
Okay, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That was very.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Now we're into the meat of the meeting. Moving on to our committee reports, standing and special, starting off with EUC. Albert, you're up.
I'll take that. So there was a EUC meeting last week, and we have a recommendation from the EUC to purchase new lab equipment, as recommended by the Minnesota Department of Health, at a maximum cost of seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents. That's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Go ahead, Adam.
I'd like to add that Harold had pointed out that the lab, existing lab equipment is somewhere in the area of fifteen years old. Is that right?
Some of this equipment dated back to the original construction of the tertiary plant by the EPA in nineteen seventy, so it served its useful life and was probably purchased by the federal government. So at some point, everything needs to be replaced, so this will be up to current standards and procedures recommended by the Department of Health.
The federal government won't pay for more?
Aye.
Go ahead.
It was also mentioned when, when this item was discussed that we're, I think, the last lab in the state that we're, we're doing things the, the old way. And so everybody else is, is using more modern equipment, like we're talking about purchasing now. So we did have some dedicated employees in the past that, that stuck to doing things the old way, but it's time to move forward now that that equipment has exceeded its useful life.
It, it is, all of that is stated in the minutes, just so the public is aware, we are screening it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice and new lab equipment. Yay.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to move forward with posting for the water, wastewater operator two position internally for seven days, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to increase McChusset's contract by three hundred and fifty dollars per month due to additional duties at the water and wastewater facilities, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Jerome. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve the consulting agreement with Frontier Energy, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela. Any discussion?
I would just comment, if I could, that Frontier Energy handles our, our energy rebate analysis and appropriations as required by state law. With every electrical bill you, you pay, there's a percentage of that that goes to this fund for, for updating people's electrical. And so when you get a rebate through the city of Ely, these guys have analyzed it and approved it.
And make sure everything's good. It's time. Go ahead, Harold.
Yeah, just to touch on that, we, we just received a rebate request last week for eleven hundred dollars for a heat pump and a thermostat replacement. So a lot of that equipment that you might not think is eligible, it is. We've got Energy Star rebates on our website, also at the utility office near City Hall, so.
So check out the city website. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to move forward with a solar interconnection agreement with Steve Paragis at one oh oh five North Central Avenue, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve eight hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents payment of the EUC December bills, and that is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve payment of the eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, sixty-two cent for the Minnesota DNR Water Cment, Cment. The payment for the permit. Water appropriation, this is for the amount of water we pumped into the distribution system last year, so around two hundred and something million gallons.
Is there support? Support by Jerome. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve invoice number ninety-two, two eighty-seven for seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents for the wastewater treatment facility improvements project, and invoice ninety-two, one seventy-five for two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars for the water treatment plant improvements, and invoice number ninety-two, one seventy-six for two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for general consulting services to AE2S. That's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a five hundred dollar payment to McChusset for his A-Operator Services through the month of December. That is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a four hundred dollar payment to the Minnesota Rural Water Association Membership Renewal. Now it's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And we have a recommendation from the EUC to approve a seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollar payment to the MMUA for twenty twenty-four electrical, electric utility membership dues. Now it's a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I still don't think we. All right, employee relations. Go ahead, Jerome.
We have a recommendation from Employee Relations to post a wastewater two position internally for seven days as required by contract. I'll make that as a motion.
Is there support? Support by Al. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next, we have a recommendation from Employee Relations to provide fifty percent of the healthcare savings to employees as a one-time payment into their designated choice of MSRS, retirement account, HSA, or as a payroll check, and I'll make that as a motion.
Is there support? Support by Angela. Discussion? Harold, go ahead.
Just to touch on that, as you may recall, when we got our insurance renewal back in October, November, we were seeing a significant increase by our then-current provider, Health Partners. At the time, as we do every year around renewal, we do look to prices from other applicable health insurance companies in the state of Minnesota, and Blue Cross Blue Shield this time came in significantly less expensive. Always with health insurance plans, as I'm sure most are aware, they all change. Sometimes they change year to year as the same company. When you change from one company to the other, there always are changes within the contracts with the employees. If there is to be health insurance change, you know, that's to be negotiated, and then savings are negotiated between the group. This was such a significant change and significant savings that at the time, you know, it was discussed, and it was to be split with the employees. So that's, we're to the point now of having a, completing an MOU on, on this and then finalizing that. And next year, as we'll do like every year, we'll go up for prices again, and where things used to stay fairly consistent and plans didn't change, that isn't how it is now. It changes significantly from year to year, so it takes an effort amongst everybody to make sure we keep our insurance costs affordable for both the employee and for the taxpayers, of course.
It worked out very nicely, and I just appreciate it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And the last thing is a recommendation from Employee Relations to approve that MOU concerning the new Earn Sick and Save Time E S S T with all employee groups, and I'll make that a motion.
Is there support? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? And this is something that pretty much everyone needs to do right now. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. HRA, Angela, anything to report?
Yes, I do. I, the minutes are in the packet if there are any questions, but I also please welcome Sheila Morabitz to HRA. She is now our property program specialist.
I'm here on the strike powers board. Albert, back to you.
Sure, I will touch on that. First of all, we have a motion to make the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four ambulance joint powers board meeting at four o'clock at Wyndham Community Center, a special council meeting, so all council members could attend if they choose.
All right, that's a motion. Is there support for that? Support by Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a, we have a special council meeting.
Okay. And I'll, I'll quickly try to summarize the minutes from the last meeting that we had January twenty-ninth in Wyndham. On the ambulance service side, they, they said that the status of their audit is still not complete because their billing service, their previous billing service, has not been responding to a lot of their inquiries. There are at least seven other services, seven or eight other services that have been having the same problems, and they are considering bringing this issue to the, to the devil's office to, if they can find more and make a complaint there. He also said that they are reworking their twenty twenty-three budget. They have been getting revenue in from previous calls, and, and they actually have, have been doing better than, than they had been budgeting, so they're hoping that, that will continue. But a short, short type here makes it hard to tell if it's, if it's something that'll be sustained or, or. And also, the hospital study, the CEO of the hospital, Patty Banks, had talked about the preliminary results, or she has the preliminary results in, and she's waiting to get the final, final presentation from the Safe Tech Solutions on that, and hopefully she'll have that at her, at her next joint powers meeting. But she also clarified the, the separation of, of E V C H, the Ely Area Ambulance Service, and that ambulance joint powers. Three separate entities, three separate governing bodies. Not one has control over the other. The three must work together individually to, to make the healthcare service work. So she was a little bit more in-depth about it, but she was specifying the separation there and how that they're, they need to work individually together to try to make things work. And of course, we have the discussion about the emergency apparatus storage in the ambulance building and, and the, the public hearing that we had regarding that, and, and I quote that, so. I don't know if there are any other questions? Go ahead.
Any questions for Al?
I think, Alex, really important to note, and you brought it up, that it's, it's a very complex issue, and to walk right into it, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to explain to people very simply what is happening and the issue, and then put the whole funding or lack thereof on top of it to overlay that. So to walk right into it, it gets to be very complicated very quickly, and then to add all the initials, the alphabet soup on top of it as well. So it gets to be complicated really fast if you haven't been a part of this from day one. So thank you for explaining it the way you did. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other immediate reports that make you more than fun? All right, thank you. Departmental reports, Treasury or anything?
Obviously, with warm weather, skating rink is pretty much toast for the year. I doubt it will be coming back. And also, as you look at the forecast, there is projected rain for starting tomorrow into Thursday, and hoping the temperatures stay high enough so that doesn't turn to freezing, freezing rain or ice, but public works and utility crews will be, be ready if, in fact, that's what happens. But, but yeah, winter fest, we did get all the snow in the boxes, and they got them carved and probably melted about as fast as they, they got it carved. So I'm glad to hear from the mayor that a lot of people were there taking it in on Saturday because by Monday afternoon, it was pretty, pretty melted. So kind of an unusual year, but the other thing I want to report is I think everyone saw that the ski meet did go on at Hidden Valley a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to commend U-Nortic Ski and Bike Club and all the work and effort they put in to get that course ready to have, as you saw the pictures in the paper, a very successful event. So, so I think in a, in a winter that really didn't happen, to be able, for folks to still be able to pull these types of events off, because, you know, Cindy went over all the efforts that the Tourism Bureau was making, and, and along with all the other nonprofits, the clubs, and, and everybody in the community, these events still go on, and there's still something that, it didn't, it didn't get canceled, like a lot of other things that have been canceled. Obviously, we saw that the sled dog race is canceled, you know, but sometimes, years like this, we could get three feet of snow in April when we absolutely don't want it. So I guess for now, let's hope that doesn't happen, but, but yeah, that's my report for today. Thanks.
Well, to follow up to what Harold said, we are still going to try to get Snowville Safety Training in, so we'll see if that, see if that happens. Since last time we met on, on January sixteenth, Ely Fire Department has responded to three fires and twenty-five medical calls. So this, our first responders have been pretty busy the last couple of weeks. In your packet, you've got December, meeting minutes for the fire department. You also have, there was a quarter four summary. I'll let you read that. I don't know that I'll need, that I need to go through that, although I will just note that we had, we had six members hit a hundred percent response rate for quarter four, but of course, we only had four calls, so it wasn't, wasn't really a problem to hit, to hit that, but that was good to see. Also included is the annual summary for twenty twenty-three for the fire department, and I'll just draw your attention to a couple of things here quick. Each fire responded to three hundred and fourteen medical calls in twenty twenty-three, forty-four fire calls, and forty-eight other events. Other events are defined as meetings and trainings. I should point out that the community outreach events that the fire department does are not included in that comp. So, so when you think about the Blueberry. So, um, so when you think about, uh, the Blueberry Fest, the Open House, Halloween, um, all the visits to kindergarten classes and preschool classes, um, those, those things throughout the year, the, the Jake Forsman Burnout Competition, the Rockland Park Event, uh, none of those events are included in those numbers uh, because all their community outreach events and fire department, remember, fire department members volunteer their time at those events. They're not, they're not paid to attend those events. Um, you can see our quarterly payroll, uh, in that next box, broken down both by the quarter and by fire calls, medicals, officer pay and chief pay. Um, response rate, um, our response rate for the year ranged from a low of eleven point four percent. We had two members, uh, hit that to a high of eighty percent. We had one member, um, hit that. Uh, nine members, or about thirty percent of our department, um, responded with sixty percent or more of the calls, uh, for the year. You can see those members are listed there. Uh, department average response rate for the year, um, we just fell a little bit short of the fifty percent number and it's fifty, uh, forty-six percent for the, for the year. Um, and then the next box shows a call volume comparison. Uh, you can see in twenty, twenty twenty-two, we, we have been, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, we've been kind of on an upward climb. We dropped back in twenty twenty-two and more than made upward in twenty twenty-three. So, um, you can see a total of three hundred and fifty-eight fire and medical calls, uh, for the year compared to two hundred and ninety-five calls last year. So you've kind of got a fire running average there. And finally, at the bottom, um, just to give you a sense of where our fire calls were located this year, uh, ninety-three, a little over ninety-three percent of our calls were the city of Ely and Stony Township. Of course, we have a fire agreement to respond, um, in Stony, in Stony Township rather. Uh, we had no calls in Morris Township or Colgate Township. We had no mutual aid calls, uh, to the townships this year. We had two mutual aid calls, uh, from Babbitt and we had a mutual aid call from Brady Township this year as well for, for a fire that they were dealing with. Um, that's all I have for my report. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for the fire chief? Questions nicely done. Library director.
I have a lot of things to tell you both that are coming up, programmed at the library, um, this week, starting from Thursday at three P M. Running until Monday at eight A M, we will be having another one of our online trivia games, a Kahoot, on the first three books in the Rangers Apprentice series by John Flanagan. So if you have read those books, which are great series of fantasy novels for middle grade readers, um, you're welcome to join in in that. On Monday, the twelfth, at three P M, the Friends of the Library Book Club will be meeting. They are discussing Quiet, The Power of Introverts in a World That Won't Stop Talking by Susan Cain this month. On Friday, the, boy, I wrote so small, I can hardly read, read my handwriting. On Friday, the, um, oh, I see why I didn't. On Friday, the sixteenth, at one thirty P M, um, we are having one of our Hey It's a Holiday programs. It's Innovation Day, um, and Justin will be leading us in some great innovation sorts of things. On Monday, the nineteenth, it's President's Day, so we will be closed. And on Tuesday, the twentieth, at, starting at three P M, we will be having another Kahoot. This one is on Gone with the Wind, comparing the book to the movie. So if you are a fan of Gone with the Wind, please sign up for that online trivia event. I wanted to mention a couple of events that are coming out a little farther up. So on March second, we will be having our annual Harry Potter event. Um, this does tend to fill, um, depending on which team you want to be on. So if you are, um, interested in representing your house, whatever your house may be, um, come in and sign up. Then we'll get you ready with a picture and stuff like that because we always have individualized things for you when you get into those breakout boxes. And I also wanted to mention on Thursday, the twenty-second of February, February, we will be having a joint program with the Dorothy Multer Museum. Um, this is going to be part hands-on, part lecture. And Jess and I will be talking about the ways that you can salvage and restore, um, materials, particularly paper materials, but also cloth and things like that, if people have an interest, that may have been damaged by water. So if you have a broken pipe in your house and you had your family photo album from the time before everything was digital, got soaking wet, um, it can kind of, we're going to give you some steps in how you would deal with that. Or if your favorite shelf of books, um, had someone dump a whole entire glass of water on it, that's a much smaller problem. But I'll give the tips on that. Jess, who is just Edberg from the Dorothy Multer Museum, who has just had a class in some of the restoration and salvage things. We'll be talking about maybe some of the worst things. Um, my training in that is not quite as up to date as hers. I think it's been twenty years since I've had, actually had that training. Um, but between the two of us, we were hoping to give some answers. Um, this is open to people, you know, just the general public, but we're also trying to promote it for people that may be in charge of a collection of material for a club or, um, somebody who has records for, you know, of like a business that might not want to let go of. Um, if you have that sort of thing and you are keeping it in your home rather than a actual physical office space and you think it is irreplaceable, you might want to come and find out because the best way to deal with these sorts of things is to know what to do first. And usually that first step needs to be taken right away. Um, if it is a small amount, I can tell you right off the top of the bat, your best bet is if you get something really wet and you want to try to save it and you know it's only water damage, is to put it in your freezer and, and then ask around about what you're supposed to do after that. Um, the, the worst thing to do is like get it dirty afterwards. Um, and I can tell you from personal experience with books being returned that have gone into lake water, it's really hard to save a book that's been in a lake. Um, there are a lot of things growing in there and they all start growing in your book. Um, so if you are at all interested in that, um, you can sign up for that at the library. Um, we agreed that we would handle signups at the library. Give us a call while signing up for it. Um, and I also wanted to do a very small shout out to the people who do the trivia contest for Ely at the Boathouse. On the second Thursday of the month, they will be giving their donations to the Ely Library this month. So if on Thursday you want to go play trivia, you will be also benefiting the library and isn't that a great thing to, to do? So if I, if you guys have any questions, um, I gladly take them. And no, I don't know any of the trivia questions, sorry.
Any questions for Rachel? All right, or police chief?
Good evening. Uh, last week, uh, last Monday, we, myself and the, uh, police commission did interviews for our open, uh, patrolman position. And with that, we have one recommendation to the council for a conditional offer. It's named Christian DeRai. Christian actually worked for the city last summer for Public Works as a labor.
Summer labor.
Yeah.
Need a motion?
So, um.
There's support? Support by Angela, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll stand for any questions?
Friendly reminder that even though the weather's treating nicer.
Yes, calendar party cancer.
I just, want to give that up though?
Oh, I guess also I'll do a public service. Next Wednesday is Valentine's Day for all the husbands and boyfriends, remind me. Just in case you forgot.
In kindergarten, it's also the hundredth day of spring. Eight day.
You're on.
I'd also like to point out that it's a leap year, so we will have for the third month in a row, back-to-back odd nights.
I was going to break that up too because I was going to, yeah, back-to-back days. Can be very tricky. Yes. All right, anything else? Any other questions? Okay, moving on to city attorney?
Yes, I would like a motion to, um, have a closed meeting to, for Minnesota Statute thirteen D for strategy for supervisors other than essential, and we'll do it at the end of the meeting.
And a motion by Al, supported by Jerome. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
I think from our city attorney communications, um, interesting information from A L S, our library system, Habitat for Humanity, some really good highlights of what they do. We do have some Habitat homes in our community. Um, and we have an update from our Highland Bank. Go ahead, Harold.
Uh, Highland Bank, uh, formerly Boundary Waters Bank, handles all our storefront, our renovation loans, those applications you approve, um, pretty readily, uh, monthly basis. Um, they service those loans. Uh, I believe this agreement's been in place since the early nineties. Um, and we would like to update it. Uh, one service they will add is they will be sending out the late notices. Uh, is a little additional fee on the service charges. Uh, but also we negotiate in exchange, um, our actual, uh, our other accounts, uh, to remain at zero service charge. So, um, Assistant Treasurer Dan Smith has been busy, um, ensuring we're getting the highest investment, highest interest rates for all of our accounts. Um, and through that process, we, we were able to negotiate some changes and, uh, which will significantly increase our interest earnings on our accounts. This is something that I think it's timely to be updated, uh, and again, they do an excellent job. Um, as anyone that's ever applied for a loan through the city, it's pretty seamless and, uh, at very low cost, so.
Do you want to converse or is it just having?
Well, I, I think it'd be appropriate for you to approve it.
All right, so I need a motion to update the agreement with Highland Bank. Go ahead, uh, Jerome.
Yes.
Is there support? Support by Adam, any discussion? Go ahead, Al.
I just want to mention it is, it is pretty boilerplate because, um, they actually left Boundary Waters Bank in one of the, one of the.
I'll give Joseph.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then also St. Louis County, um, our C B D G com group committee, we have it all waiting for Ely. Who's leaving?
Uh, Rob Willman, uh, will have met his term limit. Um, we, we still do have another, uh, local community member, Mike Manivitz, who serves at the At-Large position. Um, so as you can see, there are openings available for small cities, Chisholm, Ely and At-Large. So there is a potential, they kind of try to spread it around, but for sure, we'll get one more spot on there. And maybe if there's a couple applicants, they may look to filling a couple of positions. So, um, it's, it's, it's a great committee. Uh, this is for the distribution of HUD funds through St. Louis County, uh, which we use, utilize for, uh, support of infrastructure projects that support low and moderate income, uh, residents.
Thank you, Harold. Claims for payment. New motion, Jerome.
So move claim for payment, A and E.
Is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Old business amended and receded joint powers agreement, Ely Lodging Tax Board. Now we need to catch up.
Mayor, I did have an opportunity to re, to review this and I, um, I had worked with Paul on it in the past. I don't know if, um, Al, you were working on this particular document as well. But the changes that came from the county were relatively benign, um, indicating that this board isn't eligible for open meeting law and some other minor changes. In essence, they're just codifying the original, uh, joint powers agreement to be up to date to today's, um, standards and, and the way in which the entities operate.
I need a motion. Needed by Angela, supported by Al. Al? All right, any discussion? Any discussion, anyone? All right. Do we need to call a roll or can we just do a voice vote?
Voice.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Legal newspaper bid. All right, need a motion, go ahead, Al.
I would move approval of the bid, uh, the Ely Echo.
All right, is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a legal newspaper this year. All right, moving on, committee seat applications. Um, we have Ely to the ladies commission, one seat, um, expired. On twenty, one thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, might have one new applicant, Larry Plonner. That's a new applicant. All right. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
For Larry Plonner, is there support? Support, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Larry. All right, new business. Addition, one A to two A, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine. Resolution appointing election judges for the twenty twenty-four presidential nomination primary election. I need a motion, go ahead, Jerome.
So move.
So move, is there support? Support by, um, Ryan, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please, please call the roll. House Member Al Forsman?
Yes.
Podcast, Jerome Medals?
Yes.
Ryan Callen?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Niskin?
Yes.
And Mayor Marissa?
Yes.
And water, wastewater operator, one, two, three, four, job description. Go ahead, Harold.
We had updated this a while ago and as common practice, when we do know we're going to fill a position, we go back and review them. Um, and we found to clarify a few small items within this job description. Uh, mainly the minimum qualifications concerning education. It, uh, had said Associate of Arts, it should have said Associates of Applied Science. And the years of experience are dependent upon which level of licensing we're looking for. And then you can see within the Department of Health and Department, uh, or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the licensing steps are then set by years of experience. So those are the only things that have been updated. Uh, also the union had, uh, also reviewed this and these were the recommendations they had as well. So with the approval, this will then be posted tomorrow for seven days internally, um, and will take applicants.
Will approval by Al? Is there support? Support by Ryan, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need the Al Council? Before we actually move to recess for our closed meeting, I just want to make everyone aware that, the public anyway, that we do have, still have three open committee seats. We have one on Gardner Trust for an At-Large resident, that would be a city of Ely resident. We have one open seat on our police commission. They can be either a resident or a non-resident of Ely. And then we do also have one open seat on our tree board, which can be a resident or a non-resident. So you want to get involved. So three good opportunities to get, get involved with the city of Ely. All right, with that, um, I would like to go ahead and take a five-minute recess, seven-minute recess, and we'll start back at seven oh five. If you get the chairs, that'd be great.